Lastly, minor spot repairs, replacement for damaged concrete curb segments. Based on the estimated cost of completion for the items listed above, it is recommended the current letter.
I move to change, reduce the bond to seventy-five thousand five hundred.
Second.
Have a first and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven is old business. There is no old business. Number eight, new business. Eight point one is election of the officer. Do you have a motion? Or nomination, I would say.
I'd like to move that.
There's no one on this board that's served a full term at this time. I think it has been changed in midterm of the current officer's standing. Am I right?
That's by memory. I don't know if it was written in the middle of their term.
I believe that's pretty close to it.
In their term, yes.
Okay. That's fine. That's all I've got.
Any more discussion? I would like to start this by saying, just asking a question. Most, when I'm traveling and I'm going down the interstate and I see, you know, a sign, one of the green signs that tells me what exit it is, a lot of times I see, you know, what's at that exit on that sign, whether it be gas or food or, you know, so forth. So, I would like to ask the question about the sign being changed from a monument sign to a taller sign. Is that really necessary?
Well, reasonably, you can see from what side. Right now, what we're trying to do, this is too low sign rate.
Am I allowed to say?
Yeah, let me entertain a motion first and then we'll do the discussion. I'm sorry.
Approved.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second.
And, well, come on.
Okay, now we can have our discussion. You can come forward, please.
I'm Amy Cochran. I'm planning to help do the work for him.
Thank you. And you might want to go to the mic.
Okay.
Because this is recorded.
We started asking for the twenty-six foot sign when we discovered you've got, in the code, if we're reading it correctly, if you're within two hundred foot of the interstate, you are allowed up to a hundred and, I think it's a hundred foot sign, which you didn't want to go that tall. He was wanting enough sign to get him some visibility as he came over the bridge, and he's in somewhat of a low spot there, especially where the sign's going to be forced to go. The sign's, he's pretty well forced to put his sign on the far end of the lot, which is in the drainage area there. We just felt like, according to the gentleman here with y'all's codes department, Mr. Humber, I think his name is, okay, okay, that's, I didn't recognize. He seemed to imply that that might be a gray area there we may, could be read into being two hundred foot, within two hundred foot of the interstate, since the exit ramp. So, that led us to ask for it. Obviously, just want better visibility out of it, be able to get his price up. With that old motel sign there, he's pretty well going to be blocked with the monument sign. If we could get rid of that old motel sign, we might could live with the monument sign better, but, but it's.
If I may, this is, y'all still planning on doing a total demolition and rebuild, right?
Yes.
And, Mr. Humber, we had this discussion about that location before, about the lot size being too small to move, go out any further. I already don't see where there's a choice on it, and I definitely see why you want to have it be visible from the interstate, from both sides.
I appreciate that.
That's all I've got.
I got one other question for Mr. Humber. Explain the gray area in the sign.
Yes, the, actually, Governor Gordon's House for signs, which is a two hundred feet of the interstate, to be as tall as a hundred feet. However, Design Review Manual, which supersedes the zoning ordinance, it requires it to be a monument sign. So, therefore, it's a request for variance, and under the variance procedure in the Design Review Manual, you know, it says that variances from the provisions established within this document may be granted by the Fairview Municipal Planning Commission. So, that's why you have that one for you, okay? The setback in the rear, the zoning ordinance says that in commercial district, under section six point oh three point four yard requirements, in commercial districts, side and rear yards may be waived along the side or rear adjacent to another commercially zoned property. If the following conditions are met, it says that the, if it's within ten feet, it would have to have a four hour wall, but that would be an interpretation for the building inspector to make. But the planning commission is allowed to consider variances at the time we are considering a site plan, so that's the reason you have that one for you.
Yeah, the setbacks, I knew that. I just wanted to see where the gray area was in the signage.
Well, the signage, signage, really, it's, it's, it's really pretty clear, actually, because it says in the Design Review Manual that it's to be monument, but.
Now, one question for the owners. Will twenty-six feet, if you get off the interstate coming into Nashville, will twenty-six foot get you over the height of the bridge to where you could be seen from the other exit ramp?
No, you're talking about on this side of the interstate?
Yes, sir.
If you was getting off. No, I don't believe so. I don't believe it would draw you, it wouldn't be that tall. The twenty-six foot is, we settle on that simply because that is the standard shell sign. This one across the street is thirty foot, but twenty-six is just, that's their standard sign. It's the only reason we went, with them, it's either the monument, or you go to, that's the smallest pole sign. And we would just, really would like to have something, if I could have something in between, I think he would be happy with that, but.
I just didn't know if your goal was trying to get it up to where people get him off.
Yeah, I wouldn't even speculate. We'd probably have to hit that hundred foot mark to get, to get that kind of attention.
What visibility do you gain in putting this up? In other words, if I'm looking at the site, where do you see this sign from, or have you guys looked at?
You should see it above that old motel sign as you come off of that bridge, as you come off of the bridge coming, heading towards Dixon, you would at least be able to see that shell instead of having a small monument sign hidden in behind, I looked up for anything, lack of better words.
Where on the site is that sign going? Because I'm looking at the drawing you guys submitted, the State Route ninety-six and the main entrance into the facility.
It would be on the extreme far end from here, and would actually, to get it off of the right of way, if you, if you can see the parking lot in that drawing.
Yeah, because I'm looking at this here, you've got the gas canopy and the proposed building here.
The extreme bottom left corner.
Right here.
Yes.
Down here. So, right there at the, at the State Route ninety-six on this front left corner.
Which the right of way is just right in that area, is right in the grass, so the sign would be on the, from the grass back.
Frank, are we discussing the site plan, or are we just discussing these variances?
Just the variances.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a couple of things. When I was looking this, I hate to go away from what our code says in the monument, and we're trying to clean up that area, so we are going to want it to follow whatever codes we put forth, but you had to think about, well, would this bring them more business? With this, could you see it? But coming off of the exit, you're not going to, the way it curves, it's not going to give any more customers, you know, you can't appear, either they're going to, if they're going to look left, they will see it, or, you know, turn right. So, that kind of Xed off that one is, you know, they're going to see you because you're smack in front of their exit if they stop. Now, you can't control the people that are, get the light right and just curve on, so maybe a bigger sign might draw their attention, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I have to weigh out, is it worth getting rid of what we say is our new code and we're cleaning up an area? And I just really am having a hard time seeing the benefit, so I thought about it, well, you know, the other interstate like Flying J, they have the larger sign, so if you would have come up and said, well, it, it's to, you know, unify, make everything look similar at the interstate, that, you know, could have been a consideration. But I don't know that, I don't know that I'm really convinced that we need to give a variance because I don't think it's going to help you as far as being seen. Now, the sign of the hotel, like, can you show me, do you know where the hotel?
Let's see, it is right in this median area, right, right in there.
Okay.
So, it, as you come off of that bridge, looking, when you zone in on this spot, that's all that you're saying. I totally understand. I think y'all would love to see this going down the road.
Yeah.
I can't, I, you've got a very, and I totally understand it, and appreciate that. It's, he is, I guess, it's hard to explain, he's not just looking for the interstate, he's looking to grab these people coming down to get their attention and all, but it's, I deal with all kinds of signs, they would love to have a genius square footage, and I have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything that would require it, like the, the variance on the square footage, like, that would require it to be a bigger sign?
Your question.
Your variance, like?
No, we do, in Shell, for instance, they do have larger monument signs, if that's your question.
Yeah.
They go up to a six by twelve.
So, you could.
Which would be comparable to what Sitgo.
Okay.
Would be close to their size. That would, would probably be, well, I don't know, it obviously would be more agreeable than a four by eight.
Yeah.
Totally understand monument signs, four by eight's just a little on the small side.
I'm going to ask you to go back to the podium, if y'all are done looking.
Yeah, I'm done with the question.
The only, the only reason is because nobody can hear you. I can see the struggle out there. I'm not, I'm just wanting everybody to be able to hear what you're saying.
I understand.
Okay? Thank you. Go ahead, continue.
Well, no, I was just, so you could do, a bigger monument sign would take care of being seen.
The discussion was, she was asking, would a larger, to exceed the, the square footage of thirty-two square foot, if they could see fit to allow you to do that, Shell has a six by twelve monument available, which would be still not quite as big as the Sitgo, but it would, would get you, get you some more square footage, get you noticed more. And that was her question in our discussion, yes.
In essence, we still have to give a variance to go for the larger sign, but it would stay with the theme of our codes and keep with the monument sign.
I've got it.
Yes.
I got a question. I can understand where you're coming from on the monument sign, but I think that would reflect the people that are heading westbound, getting off at the exit. You could see the monument. I think what he's referring to, if you were coming into Nashville on the eastbound and got off, he's trying to compete with Horizon and Flying J, and if you got off at the red light and you looked to the left, to the right, and looked down at his property, I don't think you'll be able to see or compete with the sign that said how much your fuel would cost compared to looking across the street to Horizon or to the Flying J and see what their signs are doing. So, it would take half the traffic away from his business and the money he's putting into this business to locate there and compete with the other two big companies across there, so I understand what he's talking about, if that, if I'm right on having the sign a little bit higher, so when you looked up over the interstate, getting off there, coming into Nashville, getting off at Fairview on the east, you could at least have another option looking down. I don't think you'll be able to physically be able to see a four by eight monument mounted sign.
I think, though, even the height they're asking, I think the Fairview end is still there. So, I think it's kind of a mute.
From where the sign is, on top of that, I don't care if it's a six by twelve or a four by eight, is what I'm saying, so to get it up above where you can actually see it from both exits.
Yeah.
Is what I'm hearing. I understand about that.
I think you'd have to have the hundred foot sign to do that.
You'd have to have a very tall one.
If you get off that exit and look, try to look over the bridge to where this sign's going to be, I think your line of sight is going to be off. I don't think you'd see.
So, it wasn't, what you're saying is, unless you went over.
Have you guys looked into that? I don't know that you would physically see the ridge of that bridge and be able to see the top of that sign from the exit across from Horizon.
I automatically disqualified that idea because.
Yeah.
I, I felt like the twenty-six, the standard sign was going to be all he could ask for, is really what, and I didn't even, I mean, we, we can go higher if it was allowed, but I, I would.
But you felt like you could see it at twenty-six foot?
Not from, not from the exit on this side of the interstate, not coming.
That answered my question.
Before I came here tonight, I went by there again to, and looked at that.
I just really have to look at it, because I, I think the main. I just haven't looked at it that close. The arch in that bridge, it's can fool you, I'm sure.
I think the main thing with gas stations is where you're at in people's route to their way home. So, if I'm getting, if I'm coming from Dixon, I get off, I'm going left, I'm going to go to Flying J or Horizon. If I'm coming from Nashville, you guys are right in front of me, you know, that, that's going to be the market that I feel, and I don't think a twenty-six foot sign would, would make a difference, in my opinion, so.
If, if you're entertaining the idea of a larger monument, one thing I would like to put in there, I deal with customers all the time with signs, and one thing that seems to help is when we get everybody to realize, right or wrong, gas service stations, the price sign is just part of it, whether it needs to be or not, I don't know. But we are always, if, if it was Joe's Restaurant, all we want to put on there is Joe's Restaurant, but when it's Mr. Patel's Shell, we need to try to squeeze Shell and the price. And, and what I'm getting at there, it's, there's an argument to allow extra square footage for service stations. The price sign is almost like saying, giving people directional signs, we understand they're necessary. Price signs eat up a lot of our real estate on signs in square footage, and if you're, if you're considering leaning towards a larger monument sign, I would appreciate that thought being given consideration.
So, would it be similar to what y'all gave in our packet, but just on the monument, is what you're asking?
Basically, that is, you haven't got another drawing with the monument.
It would probably be like the Horizon, where the digits would move. The digits would probably move to the, to the sign.
One other thing to think about on those monument signs, in my opinion, is if we see future growth and redevelopment of that intersection, if we put a monument sign there, then that's going to limit the next business. If we get one on up out of there now, it gives us room to put a monument for a future business. That's just something to think about.
Okay. Now, Tim, can you say that last part again?
My thoughts, if, of course, we all know that intersection, and it's got huge potential. And I think, I think, and I think all of us think, that area will redevelop sooner rather than later. And if, if we start off with a monument sign with such small frontage in this area on that exit ramp, if we start off with a monument sign, I think that's going to limit future businesses to be able to advertise right there at the exit ramp. So, my thought was, in, in this variance, get their sign on up, and anything comes in later, they, there's your monuments, or, or in between a monument and their twenty-six foot sign, so.
You, actually, that's, I'm going to restate to make sure I understand, because I really have gone back and forth with this. I just really couldn't decide, because I'm really against, I say, we got a code, let's stick with it and move on, but because of how those, that, that little road goes down in front, all the, the new businesses say if somebody comes in, it's going to be hard for them to be seen because of that, the way they're set down. So, you're saying that it could, it could be an issue with some of those other businesses actually being seen with the monument?
The, the one thing to remember is building signage as well. You know, if you don't see the, the Shell monument sign, you're going to see the Shell logo on the canopy of the building, just like a future hotel, you're going to see the big logo on the building, not necessarily the mini monument sign. I see what Tim's saying, which it would be nice if a collective, a developer who's doing, you know, because, because the way that location is, there's multiple parcels that are very narrow, it's almost like fingers going back there. If each parcel has their own monument sign, you're going to have five in a row, but I just, I don't see how we could dictate or trying to bring everyone together for, I mean, that might not be built out for years to come, but I would like to see one just sign with five businesses on it, but for our point now, I, I think, you know, I guess that's why we're here discussing it.
Mr. Humber, would you like to elaborate?
One thing I mentioned is, advertisement for convenience stores now, which is done almost for interstates, has been exclusive, almost exclusively on state signs, and they give arrows, they give you, they'll show you where the Shell station is as you're coming from Dixon. That, to me, is what so many people go by now, it's not a matter of, I know we do have the, or the Flying J, that's very tall, but over style, because now, like, people almost exclusively rely on, on the house.
And the gas, gas station across the street has the larger monument sign from, that's, I would like to amend the motion to change the sign to the twenty, the what was the monument, twenty-six?
No, six foot by twelve.
Six foot by twelve. To a monument sign.
Where'd that design go?
That, just to make sure, the drawing I gave you is a four by eight.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's not a six by twelve that's on here, so we can't look at that one.
But it is basically that same sign.
Right, you would just.
The only variance that they have is where we've got three, well, they would call that a two X price sign and two one X boards below it. It is possible to stack like five or six signs in there. Square footage is there, six by twelve.
So, six foot high, twelve foot wide.
Other than that, half of the sign will be a Shell pack, then the other half will be prices or, or message boards.
Okay, I made, I made a motion, so do amend the motion.
You have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Only thing else I have to say, I think just talking it out, I feel like that that is going to clean up the area and make it more unified, and as new businesses come in, it'll go ahead and set that standard, so I really think that is the route we should probably look at going, even though there's some really good points to the discussion.
I just wanted to clarify, Frank, so the voting that we're doing, this means that, say, next month, or whenever they come with a site plan, then we will be taking action on a site plan separately, or, I'm, I'm used to, for these variance discussions, from my experience on the board, this would just come in front of us as a conceptual site plan, and then we would discuss these variances under the, under the discussion of the site plan. So, that's what I just want to get myself straight here.
And I guess the intent, hearing the variances first, was because it can't, it won't work if these aren't granted.
Because, because the variances, you know, they're specific to the site plan with setbacks and that, and that's, you know, we're, we're kind of giving variances but not approving the site plan.
But the site plan still be considered for approval, and you may want to make a contingent of the trade conditions.
Well, I would just say a conceptual site plan, where this is the preliminary site plan, and they'll take what we tell them, and they'll come back with the changes, and then we could discuss further, along with the design review of the building and everything like that.
Now, with the amended motion, that was just about the signs.
Yeah, I didn't even mention that.
So, we need to, we need to, since it's all one topic, we need to make the emotion, make the motion include the other two.
Madam Chair, would that be acceptable to y'all?
I think that's.
Just want to make sure that was clear.
Okay. Do you want to, I wish I might have restated, to include the setback. So, I amend the motion.
And the buffer area for the south side.
And the buffer area to the ten percent, or ten feet setback.
Yeah.
And, thank you. Hang on, let me make sure I know what I'm saying. Decreasing the 20-foot setback to a 10-foot setback, along with a monument sign to be six by 12.
And no buffer.
And no buffer. Don't tell me what to say.
Okay. We have a first and a second on that. Any other discussion? Okay.
I'm sorry. Just for clarification, the south's property boundary of this property is the right, according to the conceptual site plan, is the adjacent boundary to the right-of-way of Highway 96. I don't know if that's the intention of the requested variance buffer or not, but just wanted to make sure that that was what was actually being requested.
Yes.
I'm Paul Hayes, the contractor. What we're wanting on that is the asphalt area that's between the existing parking lot and the motel parking lot. The way the codes read, we're supposed to have a buffer area between the two properties.
So I think if that's...
You can't get traffic in and out of it if we put a buffer in.
If that's the desire, I believe that would be, then be the eastern boundary line and not the southern.
Okay.
So just wanted to make that note on your variance.
You agree with that?
Okay, so Ms. Carroll, would you like to restate your amended motion on the time?
I probably should write this down to get it right.
Just read it as it's stated, and then it'll say east.
Okay. A foot setback, no buffer area on the east side of the property, and following a six by 12 monument sign. And what else do we need?
The setback with the setback.
And the 10 percent, or 10 feet, sorry, I'm giving you percentage for some reason tonight, setback. Does that read right? Okay.
So we need to vote on the original motion first, right? Or just the amended?
The amended.
Okay, and the original. Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion as amended first. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now the original motion will be voted on as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Chan, did you get it all? Okay, if not all, sorry. I wasn't sure that I was getting it all. Thank you.
Okay, on to 8.3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to recuse myself from 8.3.
Okay. Mr. Dowdy is recusing himself from 8.3. Discuss and/or take action on final plat consolidation plat for a property located Highway 96 North, map 22, parcel 150, and 50.02. Owners, Big Little Investments.
Approve.
We have a first and a second, and I'm going to let Mr. Beato read the engineer's comments, please.
Just a second. There is the engineer comments for 8.0, the new 8.3. Number one, names of adjoining property owners should be shown on the plat. Number two, the right-of-way width for Highway 96 should be shown on the plat. Number three, the diameter and width of any existing driveway culverts should be shown on the plat. Number four, please include a deed book and page reference for the subject parcel. Number five, there should be two signature lines for the approval for recording certificate. Second line is for the chairman.
Hey, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
This is just for the combining of two separate parcels. Is that correct?
And I would state that all of, all of my comments are cosmetic in nature and would not have any significant effect of altering what's being proposed to combine the two lots.
Move to approve with the request from the city engineer.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, so 8.4, discuss and/or take action on final site plan in addition to mini warehouse storage facility located at 712 Highway 96 North, map 22, parcel 150.00, 2.34 acres. Owner, Big Little Investments.
I'd like to recuse myself from 8.4.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Mr. Beato, would you like to read the engineer's comments?
It's a long one, so bear with me here. Okay, engineering comments for item 8.4. Number one, for all adjacent properties, please include owner name and zoning classification. Number two, it is assumed that existing structure will be removed, please include a note on the site plan stating that intent. Number three, there is a note on the plat that references a new facility office, please clearly show the location of the new office. Number four, the zoning ordinance calls for self-service storage to have a minimum of one parking space per 5,000 square feet of floor area, plus two spaces for the rental office, plus one space per employee. This results in the site needing a minimum of 11 parking spaces per the zoning ordinance. Number five, the site data characteristics found in the lower right corner should include the existing facility data as well, since this will be a single site upon the recording of the submitted consolidation plat. Please break down each line item of data into existing, proposed, and total. Number six, a site lighting plan needs to be submitted for review. Number seven, the landscaping plan will need to be reviewed and approved by the tree board. Number eight, it is unclear as to the intent of the proposed storm pipe segment 3-4. The existing and proposed contours indicate it would be an outlet pipe from the pond outlet structure, but the invert elevation of the head wall is higher than the invert elevation of the pond outlet structure. Please clarify. Number nine, the existing 12-inch CMP in the western corner of the site appears to be partially buried. It appears the intention is to discharge the pond to this location. There may need to be improvements made to the existing 12-inch CMP. Examples, new head wall, reestablish a clean invert, et cetera, in order for the proposed drainage plan to be operable. Also, it is assumed the existing driveway will be removed, please verify with a note on the site plan. Number 10, the discharge path for the pond overflow spillway should be routed to the highway in the existing 12-inch CMP to avoid establishing a new point source discharge location on the adjacent property. Number 11, please submit drainage calcs for the site. Number 12, please submit architectural elevations in accordance with the design review manual. And that's all the comments.
Will, was there anything in there? I didn't hear if it was for handicap parking, counting the number of parking spaces.
There was not anything specifically, but upon them, the resubmital of a plan that showed parking spaces, we would check to make sure that the ADA parking would be supplied.
Yes, sir.
On this particular addition, we're not going to have an office, for starters. The office that's there right now, this will become one large complex, and we'll disuse the existing office and buy that company out of gardens, but the office and parking space. So there won't be, there won't be an office next door. I don't need for one to be there now.
So, Will, did you make that comment because of something you saw in the plan?
I just made that comment that that's, that's what your parking requirements call for. So if you choose to deviate from that, that's, that's your option.
I wasn't talking about the parking, I was talking about the additional office.
Yes, I believe.
It does say on there, I believe, new somewhere. I did see that myself, I believe.
We didn't mean to that.
You have to get on your engineer there.
I'm not sure where that note is, that's what I'm looking for.
That comment, I mean, that comment is still clickable, if there's...
Yeah, there's 5,000 square feet.
Right.
There would be one parking space, at least per building.
I mean, would we need any more parking there? There won't be anybody parking there. They'll pull up to the office like they do now, rent a unit, and then they'll go out into the complex and to their unit.
Will, you're coming in.
The way it's ran traditionally storage complex, you don't need any parking out in there. They pull up to their unit and they do their thing, but especially with no other office.
I don't necessarily disagree, but again, I view my job and objective as to list where any deficiencies of a site plan, and then through discussion or deliberation, it's up to you, between you and the applicant, on what you decide, or how you decide to move forward. But I don't disagree on the nature of self-storage facilities and the need or lack thereof of dedicated parking spaces. So that's where, that's where that's coming from.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to watch what we're going to approve on this, because that's a good, that's a good point. We need to be careful about the parking space thing, because this is a mini storage, and you're not, you're not going to need parking for...
Be in the way if you park anywhere.
Right.
Other than where parking doesn't matter.
How much parking do you have in your current...
We have the handicap and then the space beside it, which is dedicated to handicap also. Then we have the two parking spaces in the front also. And then, it's interesting, it's kind of comical, because people just wheel in and they park anywhere, even with your stripes line and everything like it is. They just usually pull up to the office anywhere they want to, just stop their vehicle and get out, so.
There's actually two designated parks, plus a handicap park.
Right. So, and then there's plenty of room to park still, you know, but the nature of the business, you don't have, you know, you don't have four or five people pull up at once, you have somebody come by every now and then or something.
Would that qualify for enough parking for the, for the office spaces there now, Will?
There was when we built it, so I mean, we just kind of went by it.
The reason I'm asking that, if we're not going to increase that space right there, wouldn't it be increased in amount of required parking spaces?
Gotcha.
I don't think.
If you, the requirement, the parking requirement is two spaces for a rental office, so they've got that right now. And then an additional one space per employee that's on site. So I suspect that there's at least one employee there, probably not all the time, would be my guess, but that, that's what, that's what the requirement is. And then, again, per the, per the parking requirements, one spot for every 5,000 square feet of floor area for self-storage, that may be a separate discussion on possibly revising or passing forward a recommendation to your council to revise that parking requirement and zoning ordinance for self-storage, but we don't have that ability to make that recommendation right now.
I understand if it's a convenience store.
Right.
My customers don't have anyone there, but I agree that it needs to be looked at for changing that go.
So at this time, with the office space that they have and the parking that they have, it's sufficient for that park?
I only see two parking spaces, plus one handicap, so I, I would believe that they would be at least one spot short.
Or the one for the employee.
For the one for the employee.
We can fix that if y'all would like to, for us to change it, we can paint some more lines.
Beside your office, which would be looking east, I know there's a storage building, existing storage building connected to your office that goes all the way down?
Yes, sir.
The entire property line. How close to the edge where the office and those storage buildings connect, how close to that corner do you have a door, a storage door?
It's about the length of a vehicle, Tim. It's about the length of a vehicle.
So you, could you squeeze one in there and possibly one or two at the end of the second?
If you look, if you look at the second building, Tim, it's being that, the first building, when you pull in the gate, being number one, and then you got that second building, and then the third building is where the climate control is, they're very easy to be put, two parks right there at the end of that building, if that was, if that needs to be.
If you want close to the other ones, it would be real easy to put them in that second building, where we have them to the right, you see in the picture where we have them to the right. We could put some, we could put two more easy enough right in front of, because people park there a lot, is what's making me think about it, in front of that 30-foot wide building. We could put at least two more right there.
Well, I think the thought is, with, with this much additional storage, is more customers coming to pay and giving them adequate parking.
Gotcha. We'll be glad to do that.
Yeah, that would be a very simple thing, yeah.
What's a parking space, Tony? Is it 9 by 18?
I believe it's 9 by 18, yes.
So you could fit three in front of that building and...
Yes. Okay, we'll fix that.
Like you said, just paint some lines.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mangan brought up a good point, that while the property, if, if the combination plat is, goes through and is recorded, the property will be one parcel of record. But based on the topography and the current landscaping that was for the existing facility, there won't be any cross-connection vehicular-wise between the new buildings and the existing buildings. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so just, again, not really here nor there, just want to get, help you have a better visual of what the facility would look like.
I have two more little things. I see the note here for the ornamental wrought iron fencing. Is that going to be very comparable to what you have across the front of the existing?
Yes. Yes, we're just going to attach it, I'm just going to keep going with it and then tie it in.
And then just for clarification, what is our existing ordinance on bricking or aesthetics on anything that faces 96, like the back of that one storage building?
That entire building will be brick.
Yeah, all the way across the front, so 290 feet, the building and the ends of it be brick. And as you enter the complex, like when you drive by and you can see in the new entrance portion, the end of that 10-foot building is going to be brick too. So when you look, you're going to see brick.
Do you happen to have any designs with you, or...
No, I don't, we didn't, we didn't draw any of that.
Would they be required to come back in front to, for a design review?
We didn't last time, that's why I didn't.
I'm sorry, country boys, exactly the same.
Yes, sir, it's going to be the same color brick, and the same design brick and everything. Yes, sir, Tomasz.
I thought that'd be sufficient, it's just extending. It's going to look just like the office that's over there now, for the most part, give or take, but it's going to be, be two-tone brick, basically.
Be a lot.
Red, red and tan.
Be a lot of brick.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I had a question concerning a couple of engineering comments. Just some clarification, number eight. I just wanted to, if Will could clarify, maybe talk about that. Our intent was, my intent was to have two discharge locations, I just, I don't know, from his note, it looks like he's a little unclear as to, the way that note is read as to what we're trying to accomplish there. So if he could kind of talk about that, clarify that, make sure that we're all on the same page concerning that item.
So what you're identifying as structure three, that would be the outlet discharge from the detention basin?
Yeah, there's actually two. There's three, and then there's, a small portion is going there at head wall number three from outlet structure number four, and then the remainder is going to the highway. Yeah, there's actually two, there's three and then, there's a portion, a small portion is going there at head wall number three from outlet structure number four, and then the remainder is going to the highway.
Is that what number eleven's not taken, the, the inlet from the detention pond?
Yes, yeah, outlet structures, it's actually two outlet structures, number four and number eleven.
Can you, um, can you revise the grading so that number three is discharged, um, to the, south to the highway, along the property line, in a conveyance of, surface conveyance of some sort?
Well, I think if we do that, we're gonna have to increase the size of the detention basin, that's my concern.
For what purpose?
Well, 'cause we're, we're right it, I mean, I didn't wander any more to the highway than what I needed to. So I was trying to, uh, there was a portion that's actually draining behind the existing house. The house is roughly about two-thirds of the way back into the property, so I was trying to get some of that drainage, uh, that's actually flowing off the property there to the, I guess it's to the west, to the, to the southwest, and then there's a portion that's, uh, the majority of the site's actually drained to the highway with that twelve-inch corridor, I think you referred to it in a later note. So my concern was just if, if we can't outlet right there at number three, what that, you know, how's that gonna affect my detention basin, I think I'll have to increase the size of it. That was the concern. I just wanted to make it clear that, that, that you understood what we were trying to do there.
Okay, I, I, I do understand that, I, I have a concern that we're creating a, a pipe outlet at the property line and a new point discharge for stormwater in which currently doesn't exist. I understand that it sheet flows in that direction at this point, uh, but we'd be creating a, a point source discharge from that stormpipe directly onto a neighboring property. And while the actual rate and volume of the total water that goes in that direction may not change, we're certainly altering the, the flow pattern and creating a concentration of stormwater at that discharge point. Would there be potential for obtaining a, a drainage easement from that adjoining property owner?
Something like the one to the left?
This one here?
Yes, sir, correct.
Yes, he was actually at that first meeting we had here the other night, uh, the gentleman who owns that little building besides, the metal building there. And, uh, he was expressing concerns, just saying he was wondering about how the detainer pond, or he didn't say all that, but he was wondering about the water and how the site was gonna be developed and concerned about the water. So we talked with him in detail outside and described to him how the, the site plan was gonna be laid out, where the detainer pond was gonna be. And he was, he seemed, I mean, we, Mitch and I both gave him our final number and said, call us anytime, call us in the next four weeks because we'll be further along, we'll show you what we got. Call us again in eight, call, come talk to us while we're building it. His main concern, uh, was he just didn't want any extra water, mainly towards the front, towards the highway portion, because he's got a little rut there now, though, you know, nobody's done anything. But the, but right now, he has an existing slight problem, according to him, so he didn't want that to get any worse. So we said, we're, we're doing this, we'll show you all this, and he liked the thought that the detainer pond was where it was at, and that's in the very back corner of his property. And he actually liked the thought of that. I, that's all I know for now, is what he said then.
And Will, if you look at those topography lines, I'm not sure that, if they could get a, an easement for another drainage pipe or something, that it would benefit this property because it's much downs, downhill from, from where they have their existing lines, or they're showing, putting their lines in it now.
Right, and that's true, it's in his very back, it makes the, even if you're looking at it visually, standing there, it makes the most sense of anything far as where it's coming out. It's in his back corner, which was, which is why he thought that made sense too, that the actual property owner.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree that, that that's a, a good location for the discharge, it's just we need to have, um, a, a written ease, drainage easement from that property owner, saying that, that that location is acceptable to him, uh, and the placement of this new concentrated discharge point.
So you're actually asking for them, would it be possible for them to get a drainage easement to show that discharge being where it is? Not, not writing a new line towards the highway, but actually, since you're concentrating a discharge point.
If, 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 yeah, correct, if, if the configuration remains the same, um, I believe the city would need to require that an easement across the back of this adjacent property, that would allow the discharge of this water to run across the back of his property in a concentrated manner to, I believe, uh, I don't know if it's a blue line stream, but I think there's a stream at some point.
There's a stream at the bottom of the hill.
At the bottom of his property.
Far, his, his other side.
Yeah, so, so it.
The north side of his.
I mean, it, it's certainly, his property and the location of this discharge and, and where it's going is certainly going in the downstream direction. I just, I'm always hesitant to create a, a brand-new pipe right at a property line, um, and not obtain some type of approval from the, from the adjacent property owner to allow that discharge to take place.
Just for a comment, Pete was real happy with it, you think there's gonna be a problem with it?
We felt great, and the fact that he hadn't even called, and I said, when we start, even if you, if you, you know, don't get with us before then, when you see us start, come over, you know, we'll explain everything, and if there's anything we can do to kinda tweak or whatever that, you know, you know, help your property, we're glad to.
If we, if we approve this, depending on you obtaining that easement from him, there'd be a problem?
I, I don't, I would be shocked if he said there was a problem, but I, but I.
We don't wanna be shocked.
Right, right, no, I totally understand.
So.
I'd like to ask Will if he would entertain, if it's possible, at the outlet to number three, uh, something like a level spreader or something that would simulate the sheet flow as it is now, once it comes out of that pipe. Keep in mind, it, it's being discharged from a six-inch orifice at number four, uh, so, I mean, it's not a lot of, I mean, it's not, it's actually elevated above number eleven. I think there was another comment that referred to the invert, the height of number four versus number eleven. Uh, so each one of those orifices at number four, number eleven, is a six-inch hole, that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
The water coming out of there.
Mr. Reason.
What I would entertain is when it comes out of the outlet at number three, if it's a level spread, something that would simulate, once it hits that, it would spread out and then simulate sheet flow as it is now, existing.
Yeah, Mr. Reasons, I, I, that, that was another component of this was, is that I, I have, I haven't seen actual calculations to see what kind of flow we're talking about.
Okay.
So if, um, if that flow is, is insignificant, um, then we could potentially entertain a level spreader.
Okay.
Um, but my, my, my initial preference would be to have that drainage easement obtained, and it wouldn't have to be more than a ten-foot wide drainage easement, uh, from the adjacent property owner. But I, I think that's, um, the city's due diligence in protecting, um, neighbors, uh, even if, and, and there's plenty of circumstances in which neighbors are, are happy on the front end, and then on the back end, uh, it's not quite what they thought it was going to be. And, and a lot of times, it's their own error for not fully understanding, not necessarily they were misled, but, uh, and so that way, I think it, in reality, it would protect all parties. Not only the, the city, but, but you guys as well, so, um, I, I think that'd be my first preference.
So Larry, how do we need to adjust this to reflect that?
I'm sorry.
How do we need to adjust this to reflect what we just got to talk about, about making sure we obtain an easement?
Well, if you're gonna approve it, I'd approve it subject to the contingencies, uh, that Will has expressed in his document and that should, it's on the minutes of the, uh, of the meeting. My experience, and I think you would need to get the easement, because my experience has been, uh, if you don't address it on the front end, you will address it on the back end or in the middle, because property owners change. You take something that, then, well-intentioned, that I do verbal, I move on, I sell the property, somebody else gets it, and all of a sudden, it's a pain. If you've got the easement down there and it's recorded, it's gonna run with the land.
So Will, in your original thing, you didn't discuss the easement, did you?
I, I did not, uh, because, uh, it was unclear as to what the intention was from the plan, but now.
Would you be in agreement with that?
Yes, absolutely, I, I would certainly, yes, yeah.
That would be my motion to approve with the addition of the, obtaining a written, uh, easement from the property owner.
And the rest of these two?
And the rest of the, of course, with the rest recommendations to go along with it.
Second. Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Yeah, second.
How does that affect your number eight?
That's, that's a good question, I was just about to address that. If the easement is obtained, then that would indirectly satisfy comment number eight and comment number eleven.
Okay, eight and eleven.
And, and just so you know, the, the comment about the, uh, existing house, uh, we've been working with Chief Cooper and, uh, the guys at the fire department and Scott Hughes over at Franklin, they actually came back this morning to look at the old house, we've donated it to the fire department. They're super excited because it has a full basement, a lot of, a lot of rooms, they're saying they're, they're gonna do about five or six different controlled fires that they, that have separate drills, and then they're gonna burn the whole things, but they're, they said it's a poster child for, uh, for training class. So, we're donating it to them as the intent. They're doing their last couple of little tests on a couple of things about the house, and they'll be able to let us know something concrete in about a week, as far as what's gonna happen to the house.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, um, if the easement's obtained, it would satisfy comment number eight and comment number ten, not number eleven, number ten.
And also, what did we decide about the parking?
That it satisfies that they're gonna make the additional three parking spaces available.
Okay, because what's stated, we can't just make a blanket statement that we're gonna accept, that we're gonna add these, we need to specify so that it's for the record.
Yeah, so the parking would actually be considered a variance because it just goes against what our current codes are. But, uh, granting a variance of adding three additional parking spaces.
Okay, so I guess we need to make a motion and state these, so for the record.
Okay, we're, we're, we're gonna draw the motion, the previous motion, Larry.
Yeah, you probably need to read back your previous motion and see, uh, how much of it you've covered, and then just withdraw that motion and make a hold of that.
I think we've got it all covered except for the parking spaces.
The, uh, I, I did wanna say something about the lighting comment. We were planning on using, I believe, the same lights we have, and I think everyone can tell there's no light intrusion as far as on the neighbors and, or anything like that. And just hoping that would be okay, that was the same light fixture that we were gonna use.
There are fourteen, there are fourteen watt LED wall pack, which is standard.
There was a comment in there about a light.
A site lighting plan needs to be submitted for review.
How detailed would you like that, uh, in other words, would you like us to draw the locations of each light? You know, and, and provide the specs from the lighting company, explaining how far that light's gonna protrude so that it is not entering on a neighbor or something like that?
I think so.
That'll work.
That'd be good.
Okay.
So the motion would be to add the approval of the additional three parking spaces to satisfy the square footage that's now existing now. I believe that'll cover it, won't it, Larry?
I think so.
Well, so you'd be making a motion, um, to accept the engineer's recommendation, um, it's only adding a easement if an easement is obtained, um, for eight and ten, and then also, um, additional, um, we, we will grant a variance for three additional parking, and that would eliminate four. Is that where we are? Okay.
That would be the motion.
We have a motion?
Yep.
Well, didn't, didn't you just already make one, or do you wanna take what I just?
No, 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 I said we have.
The motion is stated, you stated.
Oh, okay, I thought you were saying.
No, I thought, you were just clarifying, right?
I was clarifying.
Okay, we have a motion and a, I'm sorry, okay, and a second. Who seconded it, for the record? Brenda Butler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Eight point five, discuss and or take action on an amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the vested property act passed by the Tennessee legi, legislation.
Move to approve.
Move first and a second, any discussion?
May I say something? Uh, just for, so that everybody know what, uh, this is, why this is on here. The state legislature passed the, the vested property act, and we don't have any choice, uh, in what the state law says. But they did allow in that law for some local participation to what I call refined and how you administer it, uh, send out the rough spots. And that's what this basically does, it gives us the maximum participation that we can have to administer this. The basic requirements every city's gonna have to enforce, but it allows you to do some things, uh, to interject your city's thoughts in the process. And since this is a zoning ordinance, the reason it's here, the state law requires that planning commission, uh, review all zoning ordinance changes and do one of three things, either submit a, uh, an approval, a recommendation for approval by the board of commissioners, a recommendation not to approve by the board of commissioners, or send it up as it is with, with no comment at all, no recommendation, no approval or disapproval. And that basically, but the, if, if the board of commissioners doesn't approve this, we're still gonna have the, the base structure of the, of the law because it was passed by the state legislature.
Okay, thank you.
So would the correct motion be to move it forward as is to the board of commissioners?
Uh, if you.
For approval?
If they approve it, I'd recommend approving, if they don't approve it, then you'd recommend not approving or send it with no comment at all.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight point six, discuss and or take action on resolution number twenty-six dash fourteen, a plan of service for the annexation of property belonging to Jason Langford and Shannon Langford located at seventy-three hundred Stark Lane.
Move to approve, take it.
Move first and a second.
May I say something, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, this is part of the annexation process, that all plans and services be submitted to the planning commission, as I previously stated, for their review. And you either approve this, approve, or send it with no recommendation at all. And I would request the, uh, you have the original resolution, though. That if, if it's approved or not approved before the chairman leaves tonight, would you please sign it? Because we want to give it to the board on Thursday. There's not a set procedure for, uh, who signs on the, uh, previous one, as long as it's in the, the record of amendments, that's fine. But the state statute, anything dealing with an annexation needs to be, uh, signed off on by the, uh, board that's considering it for a recommendation also, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number nine, reports for discussion and/or information. Thank you. Eight point six is discussion of, um, the yard source landscaping, um, mulch and stone, corner of Sleepy Hollow and Highway one hundred, Mr. Humbert.
Okay, what, what would y'all like to know about it?
Well, does, it, it falls underneath jurisdiction of the size, that we doesn't have to comply with certain elements of.
It's, yes.
This is the square footage of the building itself?
Yes, and it's, it's, it's not required to come, to have design review, um, and can be approved by staff.
Um, even though it's commercial, 'cause in the commercial, wouldn't that make it different, um, where is? different? Where is that and the codes?
Cross from the, or within the codes on it?
Yeah. Yeah, I had, I, I asked, I had called Lisa on this too to kind of ask her, just because multiple things, but one main thing is the fact that it, it's gone from residential use to commercial. And I just feel just for that, it should be, you know, we should be at least looking at a site plan. I understand the design review, but there's just a lot of questions. And then talk about buffers, buffers between commercial, residential, there just seems to be a lot of, I mean, almost, you know, well, design review, but, you know, everything in here, but, but I think the site plan and the fact it is commercial. But again, that's why I kind of asked Lisa's, just for some more clarification on it.
Well, and this is one of the things which I've mentioned it to you in the meeting the other day. Eight, we have, we, we have commercial businesses, we require to have a brick front if it's on a Highway 100 or 96. So I had a lot of questions on why we would let this build in and it doesn't have to meet the standards. So I was just, I've been curious exactly why this wouldn't fit in. And I know you said because of the size, but that's, how big is it again?
It's under the section 1.101.2 of the design review manual, it says development subject to, to design review. The following development shall be subject to provisions of this section. Number one, all development requiring site plan approval by the planning commission as per Article 16 subsection 16 dash 103.3 of the zoning ordinance. Development eligible for approval by staff is exempt from design review. That article 16 point 103.3 states that if it's under 2,000 square feet, then it is not subject to design review and therefore could be approved by staff. So, I mean, that's, I've got the file. If y'all would like to pass it around and look at what's in the file, I'd be glad for you to do that, of course.
Well, and the only thing, 2,000 square feet is a big size not to make them go through. I just can't believe.
I thought that was pertaining to an accessory building.
Oh, is it? Yeah, let's see.
But there's no.
But I think it is.
But there's no primary.
No, there's no.
So then you can't.
Use that.
Yeah.
Because I've been looking to try to figure that out. And my interpretation is you could do an accessory building if there's already a primary building. But, you know, we, I mean, it just goes completely against our design where, you know, are, are they going to paint that block wall? Are they going to put brick? Or, you know, it, it's a pretty substantial freestanding cinder block wall that basically a joint, a butts residential property. And, I don't know, like I said, I, I was kind of surprised when, I thought they started construction without approval or permits or anything.
And that's going to stay brick or block, that's little, where the mulch is, I guess? And then the building is going to be, what, a siding?
You can see what they have is a rendering of the building.
And then, you know, is, is it going to be just a gravel driveway?
Up there. Yeah, I just don't see with it being considered commercial.
Did you say everything you wanted to?
Without looking at this, you know, knowing that it was going to be on the agenda to discuss, Matt, in your opinion, what you read of the codes was saying if it was a secondary building?
Yeah, well, that, I'm more just trying to find out what, because at first I saw them putting the wall up and I noticed that it is a, you know, they're putting a footing, it's a structural wall. And like I said, I, I'm just trying to figure out, I, I thought they were kind of doing this, you know, without our approval. And then I mentioned it to Lisa. And so I'm still trying to gather information too, but that's what I was, that's one thing. You know, Lisa had mentioned, oh, I think it's, it's small enough, it doesn't have to. And I, I was trying to look in the codes to find where that was.
Right, right.
I'm just curious, but I, I, I just, I mean, personally speaking, just the fact, like I said, that it went from a residential home, it's been torn down, and now it's going to be a commercial use where my main thing for being up here is the safety and, and the quality of what goes on around town. And when people ask me what that's, that is, and I don't know, I don't, like I said, is it paved, where the egress ingress is? You know, I mean, there's just a laundry list of items that I, I'm just curious about.
So they've already started the, the work at this place? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And we have to just kind of let it happen or what?
Well, I mean, no, they've given me, you know, what you've got, you see in the file, that's what they've given me and said that's what they want to do. And so I thought their, for instance, the monument sign was very appropriate.
Yeah, that was, the sign was pretty.
And this, these people are going to be in the business of building, um, rock and brick structures, like outdoor fireplaces, you know, mailboxes and signs. So, I think it's going to be an attractive business when they're, you know, finished.
It's going to probably look like the facility down at the 90, where 96 deadheads into 100, where they have the rock and they've got the little partitioned areas where they have the mulch. It's going to probably look a lot like that facility.
Only, yeah, probably.
Because they do the same thing, you know, they've got the, they build the, the outdoor living areas and that sort of thing out of stone and what have you.
I could read out, this is, and this is 16 103.3. It says, so this is under plan review, plans to be complete. And then this says plans for small additions and freestanding accessory structures. A site plan submitted for a structure which is either an addition to an existing building or a freestanding accessory structure up to 2,000 square feet. Or 50% of the total square footage of the existing building, whichever is less, is authorized by the planning commission to be approved by the zoning administrator. So, like, the way I read that is there has to be a, because there, because you're comparing the 2,000 square feet to an existing building if it's 50% or less. And it's, it's talking about additions and freestanding accessory structures. So, um, yeah.
Is it going to have a restroom physically? Because if a commercial building, you have to offer some, some type of, you know, restroom. So where does?
It's a handicap unisex restroom.
Mm-hmm. But, you know, this building, I'm not mistaken, it's 10 by 10.
Basically, you walk in the front door and they have a desk where they take your order or, you know, do a, a bit of business. And they have a restroom that's handicap accessible, unisex. And that's pretty much what's in there.
But, you know, that, that size building really wouldn't be conducive to brick or rock, would it?
I, you know what, I, I do think it, it is. It's a commercial building on a major highway. I don't really think we should deviate from that. But, you know, you don't want to make it more difficult, but we're going to have more and more businesses replace residential. And if we're not going to, I mean, 2,000 square feet is still, well, it's not 2,000. What was the actual size? Because that just said up to 2,000.
Yeah, that, for me being up here, you know, seven, eight years, it, it's a little hard for me in good conscience to make, you know, Taco Bell, do a underground detention, do all these codes because they're actually putting a structure of some size and capacity. I mean, there's a lot of open land on Fairview where I own land on Highway 100. If, you know, maybe I would, could put a shed up there, I guess, and it would be fine. But I think it's hard to make, you know, person A, you got to do brick facade, you got to do parapets, you got to hide AC units, you got to do all this stuff. But, you know, your budget's 500,000, this guy's budget's only 5,000, so we're just going to let him kind of do whatever he, whatever he wants. But, but I, I think the, I think there is a misrepresentation in the fact that it's, they're building an accessory structure where there is no other structure. And that, to me, I think that's where the lines got crossed a little bit where, you know.
Okay.
But, but, but building aside, you know, doesn't meet the set, is it in the setbacks? I mean, like I said, there's just, for me, there, there's a lot of questions.
How did this come up? This is the first I've heard of this tonight. When, when, when did this come up?
It's, it started back in September, probably, somewhere around there.
The, the thing too, like, you know, we, we, you know, we dictate where people put sheds on their residential personal property. So I, I would think we would definitely be able to have the oversight to tell this company where to put the structure, what to put on it. And I understand they came to this, to Frank, which is a good first step, but I, I think it, it should have been engineered and.
Well, if it's a, if it's the planning commission's interpretation, then it is not an accessory structure, then I will have them present their plan to you. I'd be glad to.
Well, and, you know, it, it's up to however, you know, you want, but really, at, at that point, there could be variances given. At least we'd have something to back it up with is why it was given. But as of right now, when people call and ask, which I just started receiving, I didn't, I don't really always get down that way. And I don't know that I've had, saw them tear down the house and that, but I don't, I don't know to what extent. But until I received calls and actually drove down there to look at it, I really wasn't sure either, you know. And then we, that was brought up in the, just in passing in the tree board. And you explained the 2,000 square feet. But, I don't know, I still think it's, you know, I'm not for making things hard for businesses to come into our community. But there is a standard. I'm sure that Mr. Shriver would have loved, because I remember them not wanting the brick front when they opened their first storage, they would have loved for us to, you know, give them a, a variance for that. But we didn't because we were having, you know, a standard and we were going by it. So, you know, me personally, I would rather see stuff like that come. And at least there's a group of people reviewing it and saying that it, you know, passes. Now, I don't know, Mr. Humbert, are they so far in it that, you know, you've already agreed to it all, right, that they could do?
Yes.
And then there you come to the question of, do you really, if he's already approved it, said they didn't have to go in front of the planning, then can we really go back and make them? Larry, if you?
I think you could have them come in and present your plan. I think you'd be hard pressed to enforce some of the things like, you know, put brick on it and all this because I've already gotten approval. I don't, I don't make sense, of course.
What kind of precedence does that set though for anybody else that, that doesn't do the right steps? You know, I mean, they just point to that property and say?
First, first of all.
Do they pull a construction, a building permit for that wall or anything? Pull a, a building permit?
Building permit's not required in that size of building.
For, but for that wall? Because that was a structural wall that they put a footing in?
It's not, it's not really a building. It's not really a structure. It's just a wall.
Yeah, but it, but it is, you know, that, that's kind of part of it is, you know, this is public use. What if someone goes by that wall and it falls on them, you know? Because it's a cinder block freestanding six, seven foot wall. And we're, you know, we didn't get it, you know, it didn't go through. I just, when I build a retaining wall on a home, I build.
I don't think it's a retaining wall, though.
But, I know.
We're saying it's a retaining wall.
But it is a structural wall because it's on a structural footing.
Well, that's a, that's a structural wall. But I didn't know that that had to be, you know, designed by an engineer or anything like that. I, I wasn't, I, I really, I found this provision and I thought these people are timed enough to have to go by the sign. But if you feel like different, then you can overrule my interpretation. And I will tell them they have to bring it in for a year of approval. You can tell them what they have to do in the finish. If the thing goes, stop working on it tomorrow and have them come in and tell them just exactly what they have to do to finish. That's what you'd like to do.
My thing with, with that block wall, I've had conversations with the, the actual guy that owns it.
Yeah.
And, and I expressed my concern with, with a couple of things. And my biggest thing is them, them bins, is, them block walls are for bins, like for mulch.
Sure.
Pea gravel. They're not corefield. And I said, how long do you think they're going to last? Oh, I think they'll last a while. I said, you go in there with a bobcat a few good times and that wall's gone. You're going to push it over? He said, no, I'll be careful. I said, well, if somebody else does it. So, but my next thing is if he's going to be in the stone and masonry business, you would think he could use those walls after they're corefield, in my opinion, or the walls on his building to be different types of stone and, and masonry products. That would help promote his own. But that's just my personal opinion. So, I, I just.
We can have him come in and you can, you can tell them that's what you require. It's fine. Because that's, you have a real monitor.
I think it's worth a discussion. The, the, like I said, there's this, the, the cinder block too, not being an approved material, I know, again, for a building, but that wall is substantial. And, you know, even split face, like dumpster enclosure, we want split face and painted and things like that. And I think we should ask that they come in front and we discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really think so too. Also, because we require residents to, if they want to build a deck or a shed, they're coming, you know, a certain size, we're making them. This is a business that, you know, people are going to go own their grounds and we are not inspecting it. And we didn't sit, they, we didn't require them to follow our own codes. I think it's a good, I bet, deal to bring them back.
Well, not only that, do we need to revisit this design manual to, to, to re, I mean, this sounds to me like it needs to be revisited and perhaps rewritten.
Commercial comes, it's designed review and that one would be clear.
Yeah, I think that would be probably the, the right answer, at least from my perspective.
What is your interpretation, Larry, of that subsection? Well, or do, would you, I guess, when we come back?
I have.
Yeah, he, he has.
I mean, I've read it, but I didn't know this was out there. So I'm, I just have to, you know, I'm, to be honest with you, I have.
Well, and we're not voting, we're just discussing. So we can discuss how we want to move forward.
Because like, we allowed co-op to build their pole barn behind their building. And to me, that's an accessory building of the main structure that's there. And, I mean, they actually came in front of us, which I appreciate, just so we could kind of see what's going on.
The way I interpret it.
That is, it's an accessory structure, but there is no structure to be an accessory of. So this is the main structure.
Yeah.
Which, that's, I mean, the way that reads is it can be an accessory to the main structure, but this is the main structure. Would that be correct, Mr. Humbert, that this is the primary structure?
It could be, it could be interpreted, but my interpretation is this is a, this is primarily an outdoor business, outdoor sales. And the person doesn't have materials or merchandise in it. So, so I didn't consider.
But they're doing business in the building, where there has to be exit lighting and, you know, a handicap restroom and stuff like that. Somebody's going to come in there and sign a contract. So you're bringing the public into that small building, I think, is their concern as well.
Uh, handicap restroom.
Right, by, by putting that in there, you have to go. Right, by, by putting that in there, you have to go the whole length. You have to put the emergency lighting, you know, with the exit lighting and that type of stuff. And, I mean, I don't care how small it is, if you're bringing the public in it.
Is the building handicap accessible? Can they get it in the building?
Looks like it's on the slab of that. Just, just to clarify something from, from my own mind, you said that building did not require a permit?
Yeah, that's what, um, according to Phil and Tom, John Blitzer said that it required a permit.
So a hundred square foot commercial building doesn't require a permit, but if, if somebody wants to add on to their deck, they have to get a permit at their house for their personal use, but not for commercial use. I, I'm not saying this is you, I, I think there's a, there's a crack in the system here that, that we're all gonna fall in.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to revisit that. That needs to, we need to really...
Well, like, like whoever made the comment said, if we just change it to say that any commercial, you know, development has to come before us and that covers it.
But, but if it's a co-op, if it's an accessory building to the main structure, I could see where it would read like that, but, but there is no main, this is the main structure.
Well, he's talking about two different things. We're talking about the so-called small office and the bins that they're gonna put the product in. Right, you're talking about...
No, this is the design on this building.
Yeah, I think, uh, Mike's just...
It's both.
Kinda, yeah, going over it. But what, what Lisa mentioned was that just, just that this being a commercial property. For me, the big thing about it too, to, is that it's on, I mean, this, you could see it from Fairview Boulevard.
Sure.
And I think that, you know, I, Lisa and I were on here when we made this. This is actually the draft, I have my own notes in here from two thousand and seven. But, you know, this, this really in my mind is to protect Highway ninety-six and Highway one hundred because that's, that's the, the first, you know, that's the visibility of our town, so.
Yeah, cause that actually fronts on three streets. Three streets.
Westview, Sleepy Hollow, one hundred.
But, uh, yeah, I don't...
Well, if the building permit issued because of the size of it, why couldn't we bring him in?
We can't. If, if they're not required, we can't make them. I don't think.
I question if, if, can you make them come in when the, when it meets what he was told that it, you know, hey, I think this will work.
I think it would be a courtesy, I mean, out of, just out of courtesy, right? It wouldn't be a...
Yeah, you'd, you'd ask them to come in, what I'd have, uh...
For who, us versus for him?
No, I'm saying, he would be, oh, um...
Obliging you, us to get in?
Yes, yes.
He, he was working on what he thought he could do. And you may be able to work out something with him and grant some variances on something that is not, you know, a public, a safety hazard. Uh, but the thing is, once you start and you have working on what authority that, if you're given permission by someone who's in a position to have the authority or the apparent authority, you're gonna have a hard time making things stick for aesthetic reasons. Uh, safety hazards would be a different story. I don't, I can't imagine that somebody would wanna operate something that was a safety hazard, but, um, that's, that's a different story.
But if nobody's inspecting it and no one's required to go out there and it doesn't, then, and how do we know if it's a safety hazard?
You're not gonna know, the only thing...
Yeah, and so that's where the problem comes in. Like, you're even talking the brico blocks, even though it's not a structure. But if those are not, you know, put, um, you know, put together correctly, then we could have a storm and all of a sudden people's, you know, houses are getting thrown and...
Well, if it does happen, I, I hope it is from a storm, cause that's an actual disaster.
We're talking about something that pushed on, there's somebody there.
The pea gravel and stuff that's getting housed and within these chambers, you know, that, that's weight. That stuff, it just gets, they don't carefully place this stuff in here. It gets dumped in there, just like the mulch and the pea gravel gets put into each one of these bins. And like, uh, like you were saying earlier, these guys pop these bobcats in and out, in and out. They're not, they can say they'll be careful all they want, but, you know, there's still a risk that if the, if the public is in there, well, if, if the guy who was dumping the pea gravel in one of those things hit the wall and somebody's over there by the wall and it falls down, well, then what happens there? You know, there's a potential safety issue, I think, in that, in itself.
It's gonna end up in court hours.
Yeah, and then not only that, if, if it's got an ADA restroom in it, then, then there's a water sewer tap connection. What happens with all that stuff? Doesn't that have to go through some sort of approval process to make water taps, sewer taps and usage tap fees and things of that nature? Do they, are they not obligated to do that?
It still has to have a building permit, electrical permit.
Okay.
It's just a building permit.
Which, so, so you would have to review that, correct?
Well, our expected would review plumbing, we have the state expected does it.
And sewers, dicks and...
Well, but you just said... John, correct me if I'm wrong, but did you not say that John said that didn't have to have a building permit? Well, I don't know how John could say that because, I mean, if we were, we have to have a building permit, if this was a residency or if it's, you know, even if they were doing the structure behind, um, tractor supply, you would have to have, if you were building it from ground up, wouldn't you have to have a building permit? I mean, so I think you might question that. I mean, if I'm wrong, I mean...
No, I, yeah, I think we're... Yeah, I think we're...
I think we're trying to, what you're asking is, we need to fix what we're finding at fault right now.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what...
Just happened to bring a situation up that brought it to light.
Yeah, cause i- if we can control where people put their storage buildings on their property, can't be in the front of the house and, and I don't know how we, this one slips through the crack. But, long story short, it looks like from what I'm hearing that we have no real recourse at this point, unless we can, it is a public safety issue. And I guess we could ask Frank to contact them and, and come and, and present us with something so we can get a better understanding of it. But if I'm interpreting all this right, we don't have recourse at this point anyway.
Well, not probably for aesthetics.
But for safety.
Yeah.
But for safety, always when you correct safety.
We, we just gotta change this so it don't happen again moving forward, no matter what we do.
I think you could bring him in with the, with the intent that we want to address the safety concerns on the property and...
Mr. Hall, you was, you was wanting to speak a minute ago, I believe, so.
Like you said, we can't go back and correct what's been approved unless it is a public safety issue. But my thought is, this is one of the issues that need to be brought up in the codes review committee and needs to be changed. We've got several items like this, this just happened to people and it, you know, he, he used the two thousand square feet and it's a hundred foot, hundred square foot building. But this is one, ones I'd like to see, one of the very first items attacked, attacked, so to speak, when we have the, uh, uh, code review committee, so we can get things like this straightened out.
Well, I'd beat the code review committee meetings to death, I beat that horse enough, so.
Um, Mr. Hall, I do have a question, cause you do, you have set up here for a while. And, um, I don't know if this come, came in front of you or if Ms. Humbert talked to you about it. But, I mean, how did you, I mean, did you read it, like what we interpreted, what Matt just, um, said? Or was this a discussion?
I really haven't been involved at this particular thing, you know, so, um, it's, I think, at some point in time, I have to let the director handle his division.
Right.
This is one of them and, you know, it's just, um... I guess when I, when I did drive by there and, and see it, it looked better than the pink house.
Well, I did think that when something was...
Uh, not knowing what all was really going there. And I did know that there was a business going there, but I, I'm assuming that everything is, you know, going the way it should go.
Yeah, I, I understand and I don't mean to, I didn't mean to put you on the spot with that, um, question. But from your experience, knowing the stuff that we require to put Highway one hundred, ninety-six and put, you know, um, you know, the stone or brick requirements...
But basically, all I see right now is an unfinished product and I assume that it was gonna be, you know, a better, better shape and everything, but what's been formed into the design. But I agree with y'all, it needs to be a brick facade, you know. But whether we can require that now or not, I don't know, you know, so. But we, we can address the public safety issue, which would, which would be critical.
And this is a live and learn, so we, like you said, uh, somebody said, you, we found the problem, let's fix it. It's not, um, you know, let's get our codes review or whatever. And, I mean, I don't even know if we wanna sit down and do the whole codes review. We need to go ahead, cause commercial businesses are coming every day to go ahead and amend that one part without going, cause we've already found there's a problem, you know?
I, I think issues like that can go ahead and be, uh, you know, amended by y'all. I, I believe Larry, I'm stating that right, aren't I? As, as we bring an amendment to them, we can go ahead and send that for approval. Yes, that's what I thought. And Will, you've got several issues, I think, with the codes review too, that I think that needs to be addressed in the future too, I believe.
Mr. Mangum, I don't know exactly what your, uh, beaten horse looks like. I suspect it looks very similar to mine. And I would just encourage you, um, to, to, to really pursue, um, the observation and potential overhaul of, of both your subdivision regs and zoning ordinance. It, it, at times can be very difficult to enforce. So, uh, discrepancies and omissions and the like create difficulties for your staff uh, in, um, effectively enforcing, uh, what, what the city desires to have in place, so. So any, any of those amendments or changes that, that can come from that, uh, committee would certainly be an improvement, uh, to allow your staff to perform, uh, as, as they'd like to, so.
So we're gonna, we'll, we'll take this as, if you'll contact and recommend, ask them to come in and maybe review the safety aspect. And then we can, um, go ahead and, what, maybe on the next agenda, put the, um, revision to this one part? Um, would that be possible?
We have a codes review committee meeting.
Okay.
They'll have a recommendation.
Okay.
I think it should be cleared out.
Yeah, it only helps you, yeah.
Do we, um, just on that part, do we wanna wait to go to committee and talk about it and stuff like that? I, I think it's...
Well, yeah, he said go to codes review, that's probably a good idea. Or do you wanna, you're saying do that?
I'm just like, well, I'm just saying, this is one, this one issue of bringing anything commercial before us, just, let's just get it in there.
Well, the faster we can do it...
So the faster we get it in there, the, then, you know, I'd say get it in there. I don't, I, I don't think we need to discuss that. I think that one part, if it's commercial, it needs to come before us.
I agree with that. But it wouldn't hurt to go ahead and have a review.
And I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't need to discuss it in the codes review. I'm just saying that, you know, this is, that's not one part that we have to wait on. We can, yeah. So that way it's just clear. It has to have a building permit, it has to come before the planning commission. Everything, right.
So everything has to go before that.
And then it's not, there's no interpretation. It just is what it is. If it's commercial, it has to go through the process.
While, while we're kinda talking about this, uh, another, another thing I noticed on Highway one hundred was, uh, the, uh, a parking lot by the wine store. And, um, I re, I, from, again, from being up here so long, there was a gentleman on the other side of town, Nordale Investments, who actually runs a mulch company, which is funny. Um, not funny, but ironic, I suppose. Um, he had a parking lot in his front that he went to improve and we asked him to bring it up to code because of the egress-ingress safety issues, uh, coming on to Highway one hundred and drainage, everything else. But, uh, I, I, again, I was just kinda curious with that, since it was visible. I didn't know, um, if they went ahead with that. I, I went in there and I, I went to pull out and it, it's a fairly steep, uh, incline. I know I've been a patron of that building since I, my family moved here. I used to actually buy mulch when they sold it on the side of that building. Uh, again, mulch. But, uh, but I went in there and I was pulling out and it's just, I was on an incline. I had people parking in front of the building and it, and, you know, people going forty-five miles an hour. And I just, you, you know, it kinda seems like they're inviting people, customers, to park in there. And I, I didn't, I didn't know if Frank, if you talked to them or if they went ahead with that or...
Um, I don't know that we can discuss that, cause it's not on the agenda.
Okay, no, you're fine.
I'm not trying to stifle that, I just...
No, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, since it's not on the agenda, it's probably something that would have to be added if...
We could talk about that.
I can speak to that in my commission comment, I mean, in, um...
Okay, and I'm not trying, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I just, I just wanna do the right thing.
We got our focus on it, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I mean, if we wanna add that and we can discuss it or, you know, in the codes review, put that on there or...
Is there a way, and I know you wanting to try to get something approved, but I, I don't know if you throw a blanket over everything that even include that gravel parking lot, cause they would be allowed a certain amount of gravel parking lot, I'm assuming. So do you put a blanket over it or you just try to have a code review meeting before the next planning commission meeting, make recommendations? That could be on the agenda for the next planning commission meeting? Because I don't, I don't wanna, I don't think any of us here wanna handcuff our departments to where they can do nothing. And there's some things, let's take that gravel parking lot, for instance, even though it's not on here. I think that's minor. I, I think that was intended for employee parking probably. So just something that minor that took one guy with a bobcat one day to do?
Well, my...
Come on.
Yeah.
Come up to a planning commission meeting when it could be approved in-house. So I think there needs to be just a little bit more thinking and to see if we can come up with a happy medium to where every single thing doesn't have to come here. But something that's gonna be, have a structure built on, built on it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, I think it definitely would, but, I mean, that's up to everybody here. It ain't, but that's just my thought. It may be a little bit more thought needs to go into that before we, so we can rationalize and, and make it make sense.
Well, I actually thought the same, cause I was on the planning commission when the other one came in front. And so I, that's one of the first things I thought of, um, when people started asking about that was, oh man, what we, that poor guy came and back and forth and it, there was no, you know, budging and he, um, so...
I'd be with you, but that gentleman has a good case because he said, hey, he told me this and now these guys got to do that. So that's kinda, that's what I'm trying to help out is protect the city.
Did he ever, I don't remember that he ever paved. I think it's still gravel, isn't it?
Well, I think he, he went back to what it was.
Yeah.
He moved everything back to how it was. But we'll talk, we could discuss that later.
But having it clear, and I, I kinda, I understand what Tim's saying. So in some ways, you've got to give them a little bit of leeway and not restrict them. And we can get to the point of restricting them, especially if it's already, um, what you explained, um, you know, I talked to you about that gravel, you know, and it was existing, um, base, they were already using it, but it hadn't been...
It was just an improvement.
An improvement, is, is the way I understood it. Is that what, how was that done, the gravel?
It was, um...
And we're still going outside, you're kinda...
Fiona came and talked to me about it. She said that, that was a, obviously that's an area where there was parking, because there's an entrance there. There's a, you know, there's an entrance there to one hundred. So she's explained to me that they were putting more gravel on where gravel had been before. They were just adding gravel back because the other gravel had been pushed in the ground and gone away. They were just adding that. Now, I think if, if that needs to be, uh, paved, then I think what we need to do is require the people next door in the, in the mini warehouse builds is to pave all theirs, cause they, they've added gravel along too. Am I, am I not right? I mean, is that what we wanna do? We want everything to be paved, we can do that.
You mean DeMarcus Land Police, the mini storage?
The way I read the code was if it's more than five, they could do five parking spaces of gravel. But if it's more than five, then it needs to be engineered, cause again, it's, it's a safety issue. We're telling people, pull in here, pull out here and, um... We're telling people, pull in here, pull out here and, you know, I just think it makes the city liable. And then it just so happened, the reason that came to light is because I remember the gentleman from several years ago that we, we came down pretty hard on and he was very upset, which, you know, he had his ideas, but we were just sticking to our code, so. But I agree with Tim again, I don't think we need every little thing. But, I mean, public, public use opens the city up to a lot. So it might seem small, but I think, you know, that's why we're up here.
Well, and to answer what's your question, yes, everybody, we don't make exceptions. You know, if that's what we require, everybody, I don't care whose property, it needs to be paved. Now, if it's in our code of five parking spaces and that's, you know, that's acceptable, then that's fine. But, you know, the five parking spaces, there's so much parking on front, would that still be applicable? I mean, because it's additional parking space.
Yeah, we could, we could have Lisa put it on the agenda next and then, or for next month and then we could look at the parking restrictions. And honestly, it's actually been great for me to like pick up the ordinances again and read through them. You know, they're so detailed. But, but that's, a lot of the ordinance start out where this is for the safety of the citizens of the town. And when you start thinking of that, you realize, you know, where it's at. And I know we've got some guys in the construction and contracting business and there's, there's definitely other parts of Nashville and other cities that, I mean, we're very lax, you know? And I, I don't want to, I just want the, you know, I just feel like if everybody needs to just follow the same rulebook and-
Well, and I do think there's exceptions because like, you know, fast pace, that was temporary. That's different. You know, they're, they were, they were going to, we thought, expand before. That's, you know, I know there needs to be some leeway with the codes department and planning. But anyway, we'll talk about that.
Frank, you're right, there was, they didn't, they didn't mislead you, there was gravel there before because I'm very familiar with that.
Yeah, it used to be a, they used to sell mulch so you would pull down in there, get your mulch and pull around the building and leave around the building. So, yeah, I mean, I just, I, what catch, what caught my attention was the size of it. It was, it was pretty large, so, but, you know.
And since it's been talked about so much, I'll just say that the owner, I spoke with them about this and they said their intent is to pave it, but it can't be paved right now because of the weather. So, there you go. Anyway.
Rich, hold on the bottle, you got runoff-
Oh, me.
They have to put a detention bond.
Okay, so are we, are we satisfied with the discussion that we've had on 8.6?
All mulch. All mulch, that's what we discussed. Have you ever had mulch on your property? We talked about it.
Oh dear, I've lost my paper. Where are we? I think we're at discussions. Here it is, sorry. Okay, number nine, reports for discussion and information. 9.1, Director of Planning Codes, Mr. Humbert.
Okay, well, turn that off. Is it? All right. Well, we can, as we see things like this, we will, we will take care of them because we need to. But there's things we don't need to wait. I know there's a lot of things in that zoning ordinance, a lot of things in the subdivision regs, as Will said, that need to be reviewed and revisited. But when something comes up like this, we really need, we need to go ahead and fix it so it won't happen again. Because, you know, I think that's, that's fine. We'll, we'll be glad to bring that to the committee and then back to you. It's on, that's good, thank you. So, anyway, it's, that's the kind of thing we need to, it's a lot. The way to get things done, I think, would be as things come up to get these things done and out of the way. Because going back through the entire ordinance is going to be something that's going to be a lot more cumbersome. And we, it may bog down, things that need to be changed now. So we can do it that way. That's good. I think, that's fine with me. I just, I want it to all be, you know, treat everybody the same and require people to do what they're supposed to do, believe me. But, you know, if I misinterpreted on that business, then I admit I was wrong, so that's no problem. But we can correct it and make sure it's clear. Because if you want, if you want to review everything, I mean, I don't know why the manual's written that way, that there should be, there would be things that are not under site review, but that's okay. If they're, you know, if, if your intent now is for everything to be site reviewed, then that's what we can tell people they have to do, that's fine. It's no problem. So. Any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you.
City Engineer, Will Eman.
Thank you. Just real quickly, the broad context in which a lot of the discussion on the back end of the meeting falls under is how, at what trigger and threshold point do you require a changed use of property or a revision to an existing commercial property? At what threshold does that development need to come into comply, full compliance or partial compliance of your current regulations? And that is a very difficult arena for not only you guys, for all cities. Because as the market picks back up, you have a number of properties that have been residential, and Fairview has a lot of these types of properties that have been residential for years. And inevitably, it's on a highway of good access and has good utilities. And at some point, somewhere along the line, somebody's gone by that old house and converted into a dentist's office or something along those lines. And I would encourage the codes committee or this group, separate from the codes review committee, to really look at what do we really, what trigger points do we really want to enforce for that redevelopment or change of use to come into compliance with what's currently required? And it's tricky, it's tricky. Because if you have a property that's already zoned commercial and say an old, an old commercial business was on it that had a gravel parking lot, then unless you have some type of zoning compliance permit, if they're just converting, say, the bathroom to be ADA compliant and everything else is good to go for the building, then they may not have to submit a site plan or even building plans for that. So, or if you had a, an old commercial use such as a doctor's office that was converted to maybe a fast food restaurant store. Well, what is the triggering point? What's the mechanism to give the staff leverage to make sure that that new use, commercial use, has enough parking spaces based on what, if you just use what was there prior, that prior use may not be as intense from a vehicular standpoint as what the new use might be. But if there's no specific mechanism to require them to come in and get some type of review, if they're just using the existing structure, they're just changing the sign face, then there's really, you know, no true mechanism to have those items looked at in a detailed manner. So, all that to say, it falls under a broad umbrella of really contemplating and thinking about how, what threshold points do you want to see in place for requiring full compliance or, again, partial, you know, if, if a parking area is being added on to, some communities will require the new added area to be in full compliance, but not make them go back and do a retrofitting of the existing parking area. Some say if you go beyond, and I'm just, this is just an example, if you go beyond a 50% increase in your parking, then we will require not only the new, but also the old. And so there's, there's some, I mean, the possibilities are endless. And you don't want to be so cumbersome that you stifle or create even more log jams in the process. But you also want to be clear enough in your requirements that those cracks are sealed up as much as possible. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. City Attorney, Larry Cantrell.
I just have one thing to remind the board of. I would do that anyway, but especially since we have several new members. You are required to file with the Ethics Commission a disclosure statement by January 31st. It's not tremendously complicated, but you do have to file it. Each one of you have to file it. The statute doesn't say that, but in the list from the Ethics Commission, regional planning commissions, municipal planning commissions, anybody that has planning commission members have to file this with the Tennessee State Ethics Committee. And I was looking today, it's a form SS-8005. You can file it online or you can print it off and fill it out and mail it to them. They have all the information there. There's several ways you can get there, I just was checking today and this one worked real well for me. If you type into your search engine, whatever that might be, I'm not in the business of selling computers. If you type in Tennessee, it's not alphabetic sensitive either. You type in Tennessee, comma, Ethics Commission, comma, form SS-8005, and it will come up and you can fill it out online and mail it in or you can, they still let you snail mail. It just has to be there by January 31st. And the reason I always do this, the penalties, I don't know, I haven't heard of anybody that hit with a penalty, but the maximum penalty is removal from office and fines up to $10,000. So that got my attention and I said, I thought I should remind you of it. Reason I always remember it because I thought I had to file it, but I don't.
Turn off? Communication from the planning commission members?
Mr. Hawke.
Oh, my goodness, I am so sorry. Yes.
Just two or three things. Public safety is one of the first things I learned. So that is one of the main issues that I always faced my decision on. I believe several years ago, back as far as Kathy and Ron Cooper, somehow or another, I think there was a movement, whether it had been from the planning commissioner, whether it had been from the BLC, to have some of these smaller things addressed by staff. That may be where this got into the ordinance several years ago. And that's another reason for refocusing on it. As far as the timing for a codes review, I've looked at the calendar. We have a town hall meeting on the 29th at 7:00. If we can have a codes review, Frank and Sharon can handle getting in touch with everybody at 6:00 that night. I know the mayor's got to be here anyway for town, town hall and Vice Mayor Sutton got to be here too. So that'll help them to be, and I'm pretty certain that Vice Mayor Sutton is on the codes review committee, right?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
Yeah. So that would be a good, good time and as usual, you get, you get the training. That's part of your training, it could be considered part of your training. Leading into that, Mr. Cantrell, I believe I asked at the last meeting if you could get us permission to issue our certificate for this training? And we can do it, okay. That was another one of my questions tonight. I will see to it that that gets handled and we'll present those at a planning commission soon. One other thing. Anyway, I forgot that one. I think I had enough on my mind, so y'all have a good night, thank you.
I do have one question. You said at 6:00 and the town hall meeting's at 7?
Yes, we'll have an hour committee meeting, a codes review committee meeting.
We need an all-nighter.
We're going to have to have more than one.
We had an hour last time back in June, that's the last one, and we got nowhere.
Well, would you like me to handle the meeting?
It wouldn't matter if the Pope handled the meeting. I just want to get somewhere with this.
Well, that's what, and-
We've been 13 months or so into this and we've had two meetings in 13 months. And we might as not even have the first one.
Well, the reason-
We went nowhere. And I know part of it was-
The reason it went nowhere is because it seems like everybody went off on a tangent. You're right, there wasn't someone keeping a handle on it.
We have an issue here to address first, that'd be the first item on, as far as what I'd be looking at. And this is one that needs to be addressed pretty quick, especially the commercial on our main turf there. And if Will can come up with something else that he thinks needs to be addressed pretty quick in the meantime, I think this should be able to be handled in 30 minutes. I think we should be able to, I know the sign ordinance is, that's the one that's going to take the longest because there's too many different variables there. So that's the one that I'd like to lead to, the last part of the code, but not in this meeting. I want to get something accomplished and get it where we can get it for approval and get it in. Right now, this gentleman on the corner of Sleepy Hall and everything, he's got to be grandfathered in, so to speak, on certain, certain phases. Am I right on that, Larry? Because he's already been approved.
Is this the one we were talking about earlier?
The one earlier.
There would be some things that I think that you'd have to make a concession to. You might suggest to him when he's here that since he's going to be handling all these rocks and stuff, that he, you know, put the facade on the building with rocks.
Yeah, it's always the possibility that we can get him to, you know, dress it up a lot better than what we're looking at.
One thing, if I could make a suggestion for the meeting that would, I think, greatly speed it up, if you would include and send out a packet for that with the subdivision regulation you're considering or the zoning ordinance that you're considering, so everybody can read it before they get here and you won't spend a lot of time looking for the information. Remember too, though, when you're, when you're doing your zoning ordinance changes are just like any other ordinance, you've got to have two readings. But anytime you're going to change a subdivision or regulation or building standard, you've got to have a 30-day notice in the newspaper of when the meeting's going to be.
Tim, and to answer your question, we can always drop it back to 5:30 if you'd like.
We could start at 7:00 that morning, it wouldn't make me no difference. I'm just telling you, there's a lot to get done and we have tried and we just got to make a more conscious effort to get more of these meetings in and get this done. Because my interpretation of why that was formed was to try to get some of this done before we got a rapid growth spurt. Well, we're already behind the curve now. I mean, that was, it's, it's coming. So before we can get through a whole lot of this, we're going to see several more flats. And I thought it was to try to get ahead of the curve and get it all cleaned up so there was no misinterpretation by a mulch company or a shelf station. So that was just my interpretation.
I'll be glad to move it back to 5:30, you know? But that's probably the best I can do that particular night, as far as timing goes. You let me know which way you'd like to go because I know you're on that committee.
Don't base it on me.
You're on that committee, so.
Just do what you, just do what you can do. Because I know it'll be just, if you do it, it'll be fine.
Okay. We'll start at 5:30. And that's, the problem that I get into there is, you know, it's the timing of getting off from work from your regular job. And I have to be, you know, conscious of that. I know Commissioner Sutton doesn't get off, Franklin, until 4:30, Vice Mayor Sutton. So that puts a bit of pressure on him, you know, so. And then he's got to be here for a longer meeting after that, so. But I'll attempt to start it at 5:30 and see what we get accomplished. Thank you.
Okay, number 10, communication from the planning commission members. Mr. Dowdy?
I have nothing.
Mitchell?
Nothing, not by Terry.
Mr. Loman?
I had neglected to thank you, Mr. Rowe, for your service on the planning commission last month. So I'd like to thank you for your help on this and to welcome you, Mayor.
Thank you.
It's good to have you back. That's all.
Mayor Carroll?
Just consistency, I mean, I think it's going to be huge for us, but I'm not going to talk it to death because I think we've already said it. But I do think it's important, as we grow, things are- it's important as we grow, um, things are going to happen quick. And so we need to know, um, where we stand and be consistent as we, much as we can.
Mr. Mangrum?
I'm done for the night.
Mr. Butler?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Viata?
Um, I wanted to mention a few things. Um, going, uh, kind of going back for what Will was saying with, uh, complying and non-complying buildings. I think most of our thresholds are based on the cost, uh, and I think it's at 50%. So if someone's going to improve a building, it's at, you know, if it reaches 50% of that cost. I never liked that, um, just because it, it gives so, I mean, it's like, we don't, we, we don't have an accountant following behind him reading receipts. I mean, you know, obviously if you're gonna, you're going to be at 49%, so you don't have to spend the money on a parking lot and things like that. So I don't know what the answer is. Like Will said, I mean, it's, it's a hard, uh, situation to, to figure out. But I just kind of wanted to say that so all of us could kind of be thinking of that as maybe there's other ways. Uh, I think parking and some other stuff are based on the percentage of, you know, like he said, too, how big you're going to build it and what's existing. But, um, again, I, you know, I think there's that fine line between, you know, wanting things to continually improve but not stifling, you know. But, uh, another thing, I, I feel like I've heard before us talk about variances and I don't know if it's on our code book or not, but, um, I really like the idea of, um, uh, if someone's going to come in front of us and they know they're grant, they are going to ask for variances. I, I felt like we talked before where they would put it in a writ, like a letter and say, you know, this is what your sets, you know, your section says, and then this is the variance we're asking. And I like that mainly for us to, 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 to keep up with. But I think for the city, it would be nice if we just had a variance folder. So over the years, we could look back and say, you know, because people, you know, we didn't bring it up tonight, but, uh, the, the mini storage, you know, they had above-ground detention and that's a variance. Um, everything commercial is supposed to be underground. Uh, is that correct? So, um, there's a lot of things we're letting them, you know, we're letting people go on that, you know, if, if we start saying we're going to follow this to a T and then it's like, well, you let that guy do it, you let that guy. So I just think overall, you know, again, it's just keeping up the standard and, and making it level. So, um, I don't know if that's a practice we could try to encourage to start or not, but I think it would be helpful. And, uh, that's all.
Lisa, I have one more thing.
Yes.
Matt, I believe is doing commercial on detention. It's got to be underground in the front of the property, but if it's rear of the property, it can be above ground.
Yeah, and I, I, it, that's how I, if it's not written like that, it should be. Because I agree with that. I think if it's behind the building, it, above ground is, suits me just, just as well. So.
Okay. Um, I just want to say that I'm glad we're getting back on track with the codes review committee because, um, that is something we need to, you know, work through and get completed. And, you know, it's, what was discussed tonight, I don't really have, think has any reflection on staff or us or it's, or, or people who are coming dusting, asking to do something. If, if we're not consistent and, and our codes don't, you know, is this part of the code conflicts with this part? If, if we don't get it continuity in there, it's hard for anybody to interpret what it says. So I think it, it's good us, we can, you know, pull together and make sure that happens. Um, it's late, so just everybody just consider your new commercial, um, and your local business out here and, and support them. Meeting's adjourned.